Meeting everyone and welcome to our, welcome to our first meeting in May. And what a beautiful time we're having with construction on every road in St. Thomas, it seems. It's the 19th meeting of the 143rd Council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas. And the first question I have is have, is there any disclosures of interest from any of the members? Seeing none, we'll go to minutes.
I have a motion that the minutes of the meeting held on April the 17th, 2023 be confirmed. Moved by Council Herbert, seconded by Council Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next, we move into deputations. We have three ladies with us this evening, Cynthia St. John and Monica New Sync from Southwestern Public Health. And Bernia Wheaton, who is the vice chair.
Bernia, welcome. Welcome to St. Thomas City Council.
Thank you. I'd like to see how the other half manages themselves. Good afternoon, Mayor Preston, council and staff. My name's Bernia Wheaton. I'm the vice chair of Southwestern Public Health. I represent Oxford County, having been elected in the city of Woodstock. So thank you very much for the opportunity to present some background on the 2023 financial request for Southwestern Public Health and their budget. The board is made up of 10 members, and as the vice chair, it's my delight to introduce Cynthia St. John, who will deliver our presentation today. We are facing a number of crises in our community, mental health, addiction, housing. And these are just a few that rise to the forefront after a very challenging three-year response to a global pandemic. Cynthia has served Southwestern Public Health and the former Elgin-St. Thomas Public Health for 20 years. She's a passionate and dedicated leader with an unwavering love and appreciation for her staff. And those are words that actually come from her staff. Now, more than ever, the Board of Health felt that this is the time to demonstrate to those staff that allocating resources is the best way for us to empower them to accomplish the lofty goals that we have set out and that will bring a lasting positive impression on our collective health and our well-being. So Cynthia, we're proud to have you at the helm.
That's a very kind introduction. Thank you, Bernia. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. Delighted to be with you today. So I'm going to just rest that there and hope it behaves. So pleased to bring you up to speed on all things public health in your community of late. And I'm hoping that this be one of just the beginning of several deputations that we make to your council over the next while so that you can be as involved and aware of public health activities in the city of St. Thomas like we are. So today I'm going to walk you through a little bit about where we're focusing our priorities and also a little bit about our 2023 budget. Just by way of background, recognizing that some of you I know and some of you are new to me. I wanted to tell you just a little bit about public health. So public health is, we're about 180 staff. We have a variety of different roles. We have health promoters and dieticians and hygienists and nurses and public health inspectors, health promoters, and the list goes on. Lots of health professionals who are very eager and continue to work hard in our community, both in collaborative efforts and at the upstream level in terms of population health, as well as the downstream level at the one-on-one client level. So what you may or may not know about Southwestern Public Health, obviously, you've probably definitely heard of us over the last three years, containing COVID and incorporating it as another infectious disease. But we're about a lot more than just COVID-19. So we're about vaccinating our communities, offering comprehensive programs and services. And we use a variety of different ways in which we deliver those services. As you know, we're a small urban, large rural geography, so it takes some ingenuity and some innovative thinking in terms of how we deliver some of our services. We monitor the health status of our population. And our population, just by way of reminder, is Oxford County, the city of St. Thomas, and the county of Elgin. That is the geographic area served by Southwestern Public Health. And we are mandated to provide certain programs and services by the province of Ontario. I will say though, that even though the mandate is set by the province, how we deliver our programs and services is largely determined at the local level. And that's to recognize the fact that not every community is alike. So it's one of the really nice, neat beauty things about public health is that it can be very localized. We're in your schools, in new parents' homes, we're in mobile vans, and we're in partner agencies. We do, as I mentioned, a lot of upstream work at the population health level where we're looking at an entire population. And then we do a lot of downstream services as well, like one-on-one client treatment for dental in our dental program, as just one example. But at the end of the day, we're all about prevention, protection, and promotion. So I won't read for you this slide. This is our strategic direction slide. And I think you presumably have received these slides in advance. Just suffice to say that what we care most about is reducing health and social inequities. We care about changing systems to improve population health. And our third strategic pillar identified by the Board of Health in 2018 was develop an organizational culture of innovation and leadership. And I would say that predominantly, public health is this highly regulated environment where we have a lot of risk management, a lot of risk mitigation to worry about. But you have to balance that too with innovation. And so I think the board set this strategic direction so that, yes, it's important to manage risk, but it's also important to think outside the box and to be innovative in our work. So this is a little bit of the health status of our community. This is data that's local to our communities. We have both anecdotal data and we also have quantitative data. And we're all about data. So a lot of outcomes associated with our plans are outcomes that take years to realize. That's sometimes some of the challenge that public health faces. That a lot of the work that's done by our staff and by community agencies in improving population health outcomes, it takes decades before you see the result. Sometimes though, our work is measured in shorter timeframes. So it is about being able to achieve some quick wins, but also have our eye on the long prize, which is the health of the population over the long term. I can tell you that I mentioned public health cares a lot about data. So we're doing a lot of situational assessments at the moment because COVID-19 has left us with some, we'll call them unintended consequences. And so it's on us as a public health agency to better understand what the unintended consequences of COVID have left us with, but also how the needs of our community have changed over the last three, four, five years. So I can tell you that we're doing, I think, 17 situational assessments. I'll just give you three examples. One, we want to study what affects the likelihood of falls in seniors. That's important to public health. We want to understand what affects the likelihood of positive mental health in youth. We also want to understand what affects the likelihood of mortality due to opioid use. Those are just three of the 17 different situational assessments we're conducting this year. So with that in mind, the board set about looking at the budget for Southwestern Public Health. And not an easy task, as you all know, as municipal leaders in this community with inflation what it is. Although I'm happy to say I think inflation is coming down a little bit. But nevertheless, it is higher than we like. And so the board set about tackling the 2023 annual budget. And they sort of had specific things in mind. They said, we need a budget that reflects innovation. And so for an example, in our, we're doing a healthy growth and development nine-week counseling program for new moms who suffer postpartum depression. Really important work. That isn't something we've done before. We're continuing the opportunity to provide programs and services that are very tailored to our small urban, large geography. So an example of that, we're rolling out a dental mobile van where we're going to bring dental services to every nook and cranny in our entire region. The board also said, we need a budget that's going to be responsive of the needs of our local communities. And that at the end of the day, it has to be evidence-informed and data-driven, which is why we're doing all those needs assessments or those situational assessments. So what I will say is that our budget has a number of realities. Obviously, we continue to play an important role in the public health mandate that we're given. We definitely have fiscal pressures across the board, and I know all of you know that as leaders in this community. We have the challenge that the public health budgets have been provincially frozen year over year for years. We have the unprecedented amount of catch-up to do in public health work. So you've heard the term surgical backlog. We have that, only we don't call it the surgical backlog. We call it the public health backlog. And it is extensive because literally for three years, we paused almost every program and service. We didn't absolutely have to run with urgency so that we could contain the spread of COVID-19. The board also set about to set a reality in our budget that we need both that upstream work and we need that downstream work. And the reality that over 70% of our budget is people. It's those people that do all of the programs and services in our community. So just as a reminder, the province sets the budget at 70%, up to 70% grant provided by the province of Ontario. And the balance is covered by the three obligated municipalities, the city of St. Thomas, the county of Elgin, and Oxford County. This board at Southwestern Public Health set a budget of 4.5% increase over last year. So I'm mindful of time, so I'm going to speed up a little bit and just recognize that the budget definitely accounts for the fact that we have this need to be ready for future emergencies. I was talking with Council Wookiee just prior to tonight's council meeting. And we were talking about how some people who had gone through SARS sort of thought, oh, next pandemic, we got that covered. Not so much. So I think there's just this extraordinary need across, well, quite frankly, the globe, but we'll dial it down to this community, really a need to be ready for future emergencies. And so that's factored into the budget. And I think in the interest of time, because I know you might have questions, I want to just mention that also important and in this budget is staff wellness. So that, it's hard to explain, but when you've been at the same subject for three years and it's all you've done for three years and you have 180 passionate staff that are about a lot more than just COVID-19. And many of them put their work before their families in responding in the early days. I would say that our emphasis is on staff wellness. We also want to be an employer that attracts and retains the brightest. I think you all know this as municipal leaders, that it's really on all of us as employers to attract and quite frankly, retain the best and the brightest. And that leaves us with a new strategic plan to be formed in 2024. And here's what you can expect for us, from us for the next year. You can expect a fair bit of emphasis on mental health and substance use misuse from this health unit. You can expect climate change adaptation and mitigation strategies being discussed, outbreak prevention, situational assessments that I mentioned, I didn't mention all 17, but suffice there are, strap planning, risk mitigation, and innovation. And I'll just say that this Board of Health for Southwestern Public Health is very keen to move the needle in the right direction. They're very keen on having public health outcomes for this community be more positive than the year before and every year thereafter. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. St. John. Questions from council? Counselor Clark, Counselor Peters, Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. Couple of questions. First one, I was just wondering what percentage of the programs are mandated by legislation that you talked about and what percentage would you consider electives?
It's a great question. Every program that we run at Southwestern, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor to the councillor, sorry. Every program that we run currently at Southwestern Public Health is mandated. Every program and service we run fits under the various mandates. How we run them can change, but in terms of the actual programs and services we run, they're all mandated.
And just supplementary, can you give an example? You mentioned the different pillars that you had there. One of them was, the second one was transforming systems. I just wonder if you could give an example over the last two or three years of how you illustrate that you've transformed the system?
I would say that over the last two, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor to the councillor. I'll get this right about the last question. Sorry about that. I would say over the last two to three years, we have not spent a lot of emphasis on that in part because so much of our work has been about COVID-19. But I can tell you, for example, one of the things that public health right now is set up and structured separately from Ontario Health and Ontario Health teams. But I would say we're using the partnerships we've built through COVID to strengthen our relationship with that side of the health system, so the care side, even though we're more at the prevention-promotion side. And really leaning into what can we do together to make a more seamless transition for individuals in our community or seamless experience in their health system? So for example, we're talking with healthcare providers about maybe QR codes to track vaccination rates, et cetera. That's a, that's a very small example. But I think just being at the table with our Ontario Health teams enables us to have conversations about moving the needle on public health and population health and health inequities in a greater way.
Counselor Peters?
Thanks, worship. Thanks very much for the presentation, Cynthia. And thanks to your whole team for everything that they did on behalf of everybody through COVID. It hats off to you. And it's nice to see, see it coming to an end, that your staff can get back to doing what they should be doing. And I just want to shout out a kudo to one of your employees, Kendall Chambers. Kendall, Tara and I sit on Food Providers Network, and Kendall has done an outstanding job of making sure that there is a monthly calendar available so that those in need to eat know where to go. And she's been just doing an awesome job at being kind of that central hub of coordinating it. So kudos to Kendall. I'm curious though about your focus on mental health and substance abuse. And is this being done in a, please tell me you're not working in a silo on this? And that, are you working with CMHA and other bodies that are out there? Because what concerns me is that more and more, we as a community are being asked to get in deeper. And you're asking us to dig into the taxpayers' pockets deeper tonight to support public health. But we're going down this road where we're getting involved in funding things that historically we haven't been funding. So I'm just curious how well coordinated the effort is on mental health and addictions.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Peters. Great question. So I will tell you that substance use and mental health are in the Ontario Public Health standards. So we are mandated to do programs and services in that space. I can also tell you that from a public health perspective, it is paramount to us that we not duplicate the work of somebody else. We don't have the resources to duplicate the work of someone else. So and particularly that subject, I feel like lends itself to a variety of partners coming around a table. Not just public health, not just CMHA, everything from school boards to private sector. To, there's a whole, I think, entire table of individual organizations that play a role in mental health and addiction and substance use work. I can assure you that public health is not doing this work on its own. And I think I could spend like the next 30 minutes talking about that subject alone. But if that is a really keen subject for further exploration by this council to better understand how public health is working in that space, I'd be happy to come back to council and just have a delegation just on that. And I, of course, would bring the best and the brightest on the team to speak to it too. Just suffice to say that I think one of the things that we're learning from some of our early work in understanding the unintended consequences of COVID is that that is showing up in substance use. It is showing up in mental health in our community. And so it's really on us as a public health agency that worries about the entire population as a whole, to pay very close attention to what we can do to change the trajectory of that.
Thank you. Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. First, I'd also like to say thank you for your presentation and thank you for the four years I spent on Southwest Public Health. Because of you being at the helm and the people that you brought with you, you made it such a wonderful experience. So first, I want to say again, thank you for the initiatives that you've been putting forward for climate change and that open pipeline that you have created so that still today I can pass things along up through that pipeline and have it received. So thank you for that. Throughout my time on Southwest Public Health, I've really pushed the initiatives for healthy babies, healthy children. Because we all know that physical, mental, emotional health starts at a young age and all of those wraparound services and getting a good start with each and every one of those. So I was hoping you could give us a little bit of an update in your words about how you feel that that program has come through COVID and how it is on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you for the question through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Baldwin Sands. I can tell you that I'm really happy to report that our healthy growth and development work did not stop in its entirety during COVID. We actually rated that particular program, especially our program where we go into homes with new moms and dads. We rated that a high priority, meaning we continued to do that. In some cases, we had to do the work virtually, not ideal, but in some cases we had to. But what I can say is that even we're learning through firsthand experiences with our staff who are in homes in the Healthy Babies, Healthy Children program, that they are seeing the effects of the unintended consequences of COVID-19. So I actually can't even spell out for you at this council meeting how our programs and services in Healthy Babies, Healthy Children will evolve because we're still at the infancy of even understanding the challenges associated with, quite frankly, being a new parent in the middle of a global pandemic where you're isolated. You can't see your family. You can't see your friends. In some cases, you're, you're having to navigate, I mean, some of you know, the learning at home, whatever it was called, you know, where you have your kids learning schoolwork at home. There's just a bevy of things that I think are really important to understand what has been the experience of people in the Healthy Growth and Development Team and in particular, Healthy Babies, Healthy Children. I can assure you that our intention is to continue with that program. And I look forward to sharing results at the end of the year about what we've learned in this year.
Well, thank you, Cynthia. The, I look forward to you coming back and sharing with us as we continue to construct the strategic plan going forward for Southwest Public Health. And as Counselor Peters has said, the crossover, health versus municipalities and speaking with other mayors and other municipal politicians, health isn't on our docket. And yet it's a big part of what we have to do now. So I'd love us to keep that conversation going too. And let us know when you'd like to come back, but we'll be looking for you too and be asking for it. So thank you for your time tonight and thanks for coming out and sharing with us.
Thank you very much.
And you don't have to hang around with us if you don't want, but if you, you know, thanks. Our next item, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Worship Council now resolve itself into committee the whole to deal with the following business. The first committee is Strategic Direction and Development. The first item is notice of passing of a zoning bylaw amendment received from the municipality of Central Elgin to permit only farming and accessory usage on the property at 46786 Ron McNeil Line and to permit a rural residential use on a severed property with a frontage along Edgeware Line just west of Belmont Road. I worship unless there are any further items from the members for this committee. We'll now move into community engagement and services. The first item is a request for road closures for nostalgia night's car show. Have a motion that report ES 2823 relating to the request be received for information and further that the closure of the road sections within report ES 2823 on Saturday, July the 15th, 2023, between the hours of 3:00 PM and 10:00 PM to allow for the nostalgia night's car show be authorized. Moved by Council Coler, seconded by Council McCully.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, I can let you know that the Special Events Committee has looked, looked at this. The DDB has really worked hard as to where this event would go in a year when the downtown was under construction. I think they've found some really sweet spots on how this will work. And we're looking forward to a, as busy a nostalgia nights as we've seen in the last couple of years and as a way of helping the downtown. So thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Next?
Next item relates to a request for road closures for the Railway City Road Races. I have a motion that report ES 2923 relating to the request be received for information. And further, the council authorize the road closures as per report ES 2923. And further, that staff be directed to ensure that the Railway City Road Race Event organizers coordinate the safe operation of the traffic control points. Now moved by Council Gibson, seconded by Council Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Counsel Wookiee?
Thanks, worship. I just want to make sure that we're aware that like if there's a function in the park that weekend, we ran into a situation, I think, where there was some overlap and it caused some, not friction between the groups, but just simply friction in terms of movement and organization. So just to make sure that, I don't know how we'll deal with that. I don't know what the plan is for the Pinnifer Park or festivals for September 24th, but just so.
I have some information on that, that they've, the Harvest Festival, last year it was called, was the whole park and then found out after the fact that the road races were using part of the park. This year, the Harvest Fest has designated itself on and near Emsley Field only, and this will not affect them in any way. So it's, this is the great communication that can happen when we run into it once, we won't run into it twice. So that one is. So that one has been, it appears to be greatly solved. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your Worship, unless there are any further items from the members for this committee, we'll now move into infrastructure and civic operations. First item relates to parking control, various parking restriction requests. I have motion that report ES twenty-seven twenty-three relating to parking control, various parking restriction requests be received for information. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared for its consideration to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine. Moved by Counselor Herbert, seconded by Counselor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Your Worship, unless there are any further items from the members for this committee?
Counselor Kohler.
Thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to pass on, I got a notice or a note from downtown resident that is right in the heart of the construction and just wanted to pass on their thanks for how they're being communicated to. And they said that the construction is just going great and they really appreciate the communication. So I was quite pleased to take that call today because I'm not used to that. But anyways, wanted to pass that on and they were really grateful of it.
Well, thank you for sharing. I think too often we don't hear the good call. So way to go.
I'll see no further items. Your Worship, we'll move into corporate governance and administration. First item relates to community grant applications for month of May. I have motion that report TR oh-nine twenty-three relating to the community grant applications for May of twenty-twenty-three be received for information. And further, the council approved the community grant request from Canadian Mental Health Association Thames Valley Addiction and Mental Health Services in the amount of one thousand one hundred dollars. Moved by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Baldwin-Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, if I can add, today we did our proclamation for Canadian Mental Health and Mental Health Month here in May. And a great turnout today, even though we're, with the construction happening on Talbot Street, we've had to alter the proclamations a little bit. But we've met in here and a great group. So anything else on this? Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Your Worship, if there's no further items under this committee, council will now reconvene into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions, and actions of council and committee the whole, as recorded in the minutes of this date, be confirmed, ratified, and adopted. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next, we move into reports of committees. First report relates to heritage alteration permit for the property at six thirty-seven and six thirty-nine Talbot Street. I have a motion that report MHC oh-four twenty-three relating to the heritage alteration permit for six thirty-seven to six thirty-nine Talbot Street be received for information. And further, council issue a heritage alteration permit for the property at six thirty-seven and six thirty-nine Talbot Street relating to application HAP oh-four twenty-three, subject to the following. That signage above the first floor aligned with the historic height of signage along Talbot Street block between John Street and Flora Street as shown in the heritage photos attached to report MHC oh-four twenty-three. And that the applicant provide updated elevation drawings after removal of the existing cladding. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Second report also dealing with a heritage alteration permit for the property at four seventy-one Talbot Street. I have a motion that report MHC oh-five twenty-three relating to heritage alteration permit for the property at four seventy-one Talbot Street be received for information. And for the council authorize, sorry, issue a heritage alteration permit for the property at four seventy-one Talbot Street relating to application HAP oh-five twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Gibson, seconded by Counselor McCully.
Questions or comments? Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, Worship. Excuse me, when I see all these permits coming for heritage for downtown, I think that's just great for our city. I mean, we're really working hard. Once the, once the construction is done and all these permits are going, our Talbot Street is just looking at much better. So I just want to compliment the people investing in our downtown. So thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
We now move into petitions and communications. First item is a request for jumbo lighting by the RCMP for its one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I have a motion that the jumbo monument be lit in red on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three for the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Royal Canadian Mounted Police. Moved by Counselor Baldwin-Sands, seconded by Counselor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
And next is a letter received from David Maureen Jenkins requesting a proclamation, flag raising, and jumbo lighting to commemorate Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. I have a motion that council of the city of St. Thomas proclaim September twenty-twenty-three as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of St. Thomas. And further that the Childhood Cancer Gold Ribbon Flag be flown at City Hall from September eighteenth to twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. And further that the jumbo monument be lit in gold from September eighteenth to twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Herbert, seconded by Counselor McCully.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
A third item on the agenda under petitions is a copy of a resolution addressed to Waterloo area MPP, and that's from the regional municipality of Waterloo regarding the inclusion of candidate and donor personal information on municipal election documents. Your Worship, if there are no further items under petitions from the members, we can now move into unfinished business for council.
Counselor Baldwin-Sands?
Thank you. Quick item today, May first in Ontario is the birthday of Canada's first female physician, Dr. Emily Stowe. Today is the day that is dedicated to the appreciation of the work of family physicians across the province of Ontario. Our health recruitment partnership recruiter Cheryl Fish is spending the day on the rounds with her delivery of baked goods to our doctors across this county to show our appreciation. And my fellow committee member, I wonder if Tara has any further comments?
Thank you. Some may not be aware of what happens with the Health Recruitment Committee for St. Thomas in Elgin County. Their focus on recruitment activity that will attract new family physicians and supports new family physicians in our area. And just, there's a ton of great work happening behind the scenes to attract and add new doctors and just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. Also, under new business, I have a request of council and it's the lighting of our jumbo monument in green on May sixth and seventh for the coronation of our new king. I don't know, do I need a motion for that or is it just council direction? I had a couple of people moving it if I can't. All right. So questions or comments on that? All in, Counselor Peters?
Yeah, I don't know what your collection of flags is like, Your Worship, but it, I know at the old St. Thomas Church, we regularly fly the Union Jack, and if we have a Union Jack, we should be flying that as well, too.
We will check our collection, and if not, we'll ask you, do you have two?
I might have a few in my collection.
Thank you. Counselor Baldwin-Sands?
Thank you. On that same note, at the old St. Thomas Church, are they going to be ringing the bells on the sixth and the seventh? To bring in the new monarch?
I, it has, it wasn't discussed. I don't, and it gets started at five AM in the morning. I'm not sure if I want to be at the church at five.
That neighborhood, then? Thank you. Also, also under new business, wanted to recognize that today is May first and the downtown hunt, a scavenger hunt that's going on in our downtown through the construction time has started. So please, if you want to play part of this, please go to railwaycitytourism.com and you will download the Goose Chase app that lets you go and play as part of this. All right. The third piece that I wanted under new business today is, is Counselor McCully had an opportunity as a new member of the Police Services Board to do a ride along this month with with a couple of our officers, and I thought maybe she could fill us in on the fun and excitement of the shootings and the police chases you had that night. I know there was neither of those, but tell us about what happened on your ride along.
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, it was, so I did two separate days. I did a ride along during the day in a police car. And then I also did a walkabout in the downtown core on a Friday evening. And it was pretty incredible and eye-opening. I learned a ton and, you know, on the day trip, what I found was I was with Constable Armstrong and the compassionate and calm approach that he took. There were multiple mental health calls that came through and the approach that was taken by Constable Armstrong was really incredible. I was also struck by, if you ever see a police officer sitting in the car and it looks like they may not be doing anything, and it's likely the significant amount of paperwork that is required. And that was really eye-opening for me. Also felt that, so I walked the downtown core with Constable Catherine and Racine. And it was, it was incredible to see the established relationships they had with every single person in the downtown core. And you could tell that they were established and that, you know, conversations were back and forth. And Constable Racine is, actually, she's a nurse with a mental health background. And I was able to see firsthand in a mental health crisis how our officers in the downtown core reacted to it. And it was, it was pretty, pretty incredible to see, and that mental health background certainly, you know, makes a big difference. And yeah, I just, it's just the relationships that were built, especially in that, that walk along. You know, to give you an example, we went to the inn and not for a call, just to say hello. And we spent considerable time there. And so I think, I think it's important that we acknowledge that and the hard work and the relationships that our officers are building within our community.
Thank you, Counselor McCully. I think you used the words eye-opening. It is really truly seeing what our officers do on an every minute of every day kind of basis. So thank you for sharing that with us and the folks at home tonight, too. Does anybody have any questions of Counselor McCully? Perfect. Thank you. We had a motion on the lighting of jumbo and we didn't vote on it. So the mayor was lost. And so any further questions on that motion? Seeing none, everyone in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Your Worship, we do have one item under new business at the request of Counselor Clark. Correspondence from the Women of Ontario Say No requesting that council support Bill Five, the Stopping Harassment and Abuse by Local Leaders Act twenty-two twenty-two.
Do you want to speak to that, Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I'd like to move that we endorse the attached resolution from Sault Ste. Marie supporting Bill Five and further that we circulate the resolution to Premier Doug Ford, MPP Rob Flack, and AMO. This bill has received all party support on two different occasions, and both times it died because of a federal election and a provincial election. And I believe there needs to be a consistent provincial consequences put in place for municipal leaders who fail to live up to the codes of conduct and provincial legislation.
Questions or comments? Counselor Baldwin-Sands?
I fully support this and I really do appreciate this groundswell of movement that is now beginning to happen across our province, keeping municipal councillors accountable.
Can I take that as a second, Counselor?
I believe Counselor McCully would like to second it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just to follow up, I was also going to put that motion forward. Just to sum it up for, if people are unsure what this is, it basically permits municipalities to direct the integrity commissioner to apply to the court to vacate a member seat for failing to comply with the municipality's violence and harassment policies. So to me, it's a no-brainer, and I second your motion.
Great. Further discussions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That's carried.
Your Worship, if there's no further items of new business from the members, we'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws, moved by Counselor Baldwin-Sands, seconded by Counselor Peters.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
I have a motion by Counselor Baldwin-Sands, seconded by Counselor Peters, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee the whole, and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
First bylaw?
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the first day of May, twenty-twenty-three.
All those questions or comments? All those in favor? Next.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine, being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regarding traffic and the parking of motor vehicles. This relates to speed control on Ron McNeil Line, Yarmit Center Road, and Edgeware Line.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Next bylaw, please.
That motion being passed, we'll now move into the third bylaw, which is a bylaw to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine, being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regulating traffic and the parking of motor vehicles. This relates to a two-way traffic conversion along John Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
Fourth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Unifor Canada and its local twenty-seven. This relates to collective agreement at Valley View Home.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
Fifth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and St. Thomas Professional Firefighters Association, local four forty-seven, relating to that collective agreement expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
Bylaw number six is bylaw to adopt official plan amendment number one oh-six to the city of St. Thomas Official Plan. This relates to city-initiated amendment for housekeeping matters relating to additional dwelling units.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
Seventh bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight, being the zoning bylaw for the city of St. Thomas relating to the city-initiated amendment for housekeeping matters related to additional dwelling units.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
Eighth bylaw is bylaw to amend bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight, being the zoning bylaw for the city of St. Thomas. This relates to the city-initiated amendment for housekeeping matters relating to lot area controls.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
The ninth and final bylaw is a bylaw to assume certain lands as part of the public highways known as one twenty-two to one twenty-four Edward Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Your Worship, I rise and report the successful passing of the nine bylaws.
I have a motion by Counselor Baldwin-Sands, seconded by Counselor Peters, that the report of council and committee the whole on the nine bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time, engrossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next order of business is public notice. There are two notices this evening. The first is that administration intends to introduce a report at the May eighth, twenty-twenty-three council meeting requesting approval of an unbudgeted capital expenditure relating to the construction of basketball courts at Burwell Park. The second is that The second is that the city provides notice of his intention to adopt bylaws to establish 2023 property tax ratios and property rates at its meeting to be held Monday, May the 23rd. The council meeting will be available to the public in person or on Zoom and can be accessed through a link on the city's website. No notices of motion this evening. There is a need to move into closed session. At this time, I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with a proposed or pending disposition of land. Two matters of a position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality. A matter of information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality by Canada and the province of Ontario or Crown Agency or any of them. A trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial or labour relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality, which have disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons or organization and a personal matter about an identifiable individual. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor McCully.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll remind the folks at home and those those here watching that we'll be moving now into a closed session. When we are finished that closed session will only rise in order to adjourn or pass anything that was completed in the closed session. So I want to thank all of the viewers at home tonight. Say thank you for them watching and for all that joined us here. Thank you for coming. All those in favor. Any opposed? That's carried.